Your time codes are good.
Five fifty-eight.
Alright, so like one minute early?
Five, five, five fifty.
Where are you with?
I'm a resident and I have a nonprofit and I, for two years, I've been trying to highlight what's going on here. It's pretty bad.
What's the name of your nonprofit?
Friends of Orno. And if you look at our website, you'll find a lot of really great information.
I might have even seen it before.
I'm pretty sure you probably have, because people have sent, I'm the one that pulled all the documents and all the articles together and...
Just you or do you have any help?
Well, there's a lot of other residents that have, that are outraged, but it's just me basically on that one.
Alright, welcome to the Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, Orno City Council meeting. I know all comments and members are here in the presence. We always have the pleasure of the regents.
All right, so we can...
So I invite you to stand in the face of the flag.
Pleasure, regents, to the right, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Alright, the first one, I think we're gonna have a swearing ceremony, like drinking with vets. And I think Chief Brannick has a, her presentation to do. Is he in the audience here somewhere?
Uh, he's not at home.
Oh, he's coming in right now.
Chief, you're up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apologies. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Jacob and Anna. Stand with, uh, they were, they're gonna be sworn in tonight as junior candidates, or junior cadets, I'm sorry, with the police department through the GTO or Growth Crew Opportunity Program. The GTO program is designed for young adults to gain job skills, social interaction by volunteering and working with city staff. Jacob and Anna will be working with police department, city hall, parks department, and public authorities doing various jobs and developing their job skills. Police officers and city staff also gain a better understanding of disabilities through their interaction with Jacob and Anna. So tonight, I'm proud to introduce Jacob and Anna, and have been sworn in tonight with the GTO junior cadets. This is our fourth, um, group of young adults that we've done, we've been doing this since two thousand and nineteen, so... Jacob and Anna.
But I gotta say, who's the hand?
Alright.
I am gonna swear you in here and then after a long, now all you have to do is say, "I do." Raise, raise your hand.
I'm entitled.
I, Jacob and Anna, do solemnly swear under oath that I will support the work of the city of Orno and Orno Police Department, that I will follow the direction of its employees and support the duties of the office of police cadet in the city of Orno, of the county of Hennessy, to the best of my judgment and abilities, so help me God. If you agree, say, "I do."
I do.
Too tight.
Alright.
Some family wanna come up as well, get in the picture?
Got to next week. We got two of you to deal with. We got two of you to deal with now. Kill them.
So we have, uh, parents from Jennifer and Jeff, and then their job coach, Paul.
Hello, partner.
Congratulations.
It's a wonderful program, we have.
That's for sure. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, so one motion will approve of all the different items that are on the agenda. And if there's anything we need to take off, just raise your hand, or we'll let it take off and talk about it. So with that, I'd say I'd like to take a stab at the consent agenda tonight.
I'll take a stab at this evening. I'd move to accept items number one through seven as is on the consent agenda.
I need to pull off one, please. Just for amended, number one, the minutes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so what we have on the consent agenda tonight is that number two, we're pulling off number one, we'll talk about that right after. Number two, the city council work session, minutes of May eighth. Number three, the claims and the bills. Number four, approval of transient merchant license, Renaissance fireworks. Number five, Nevada parking lot and golf course, parking lot award, project twenty-one dash forty, and project twenty-three dash thirty-one. Number six, approval of wage adjustment for LALS Local Forty, and number seven, approve Hennessy County assessing services. Anybody wanna, wanna talk any further about those items? Seeing none, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number one.
Note that passes five zero, and then we have number one, that comes down with minutes and I have a question.
Yeah, um, this is very simple, it is just, we can make an amended motion likely to just fix this, but in the notes, my last mayor council report, indicated that I had received, um, the fire service notes when the order should be reading, as it's been reading, not receiving two years of notes. So that's a simple correction, and we can make a motion to amend.
Hey, you wanna make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend those meeting minutes from May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, with an amendment that the word in my new council report should be, toward reading, not receiving.
Awesome.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes five zero. Okay, next on our agenda is the finance report, which is on meeting management, the agenda, video recording, and recording equipment.
Okay, thank you, mayor, council. This item, the item before you is sort of a combination of two items. During the two thousand and twenty-three budget process, we had added an agenda management piece that the city clerk really felt was, was needed. It will streamline creation of agendas, right? Now we create the agenda in a Word document, everybody submits their own council items and, and then the city clerk asks you, sometimes we format our items, because we use an old template, or sometimes, uh, sometimes kind of yell at us, if you really messed it up. But this would automate the whole system, it would streamline it, that would allow the clerk to create the agenda more, more efficiently. It would require that staff all use the same template, so everything is the same format. It would change some of the way the council accesses the packets. It would now go to an application on the cloud, where instead of going to Dropbox and downloading all the stuff and working on it from your location, you would actually log in to the cloud-based account, and you would see the current agenda and the current attachments. I know one benefit of that is if there is a change or a late addition, the next time you log onto the site, it's right there, you don't have to go out to the, um, Dropbox and find that the, um, the change is made right away and all copies, so if someone doesn't go back there and update it and has been accessing it through the application, it's updated anyway, so. So that part makes sense, and like you said, that was added to the two thousand and twenty-three budget through that update. As part of that update, we were working with Granicus, who currently provides our streaming services. And then we also contacted Civic Plus, by we, I mean by IT's person, and Anna. And they went over it, you know, out of those two, there's a limited marketplace for it, because it is government. And we have relationships with both of these, so we thought those would those easily be integrated into our current system. Uh, the Granicus quote was much cheaper than the Civic Plus quote, so we thought we could go with Granicus on that. But as part of the process, well, as you know, we have been working and struggling at times with our audio/video presentation in this room. So independent of the first part that Anna was working on, Dave and I were also working on replacing some equipment here. We have some switches back there that are ten years old, or amps that are ten years old that need to be replaced. We have a digital analog converter that, um, is the piece that fails fairly often. And so we can eliminate that piece from the puzzle altogether, um, with, with, with some basic upgrades. And so we were working on that, and in the talks with Granicus, we realized that they offer a solution where they have a piece of equipment with four cameras, and they would actually record the meetings remotely. They, we could add on closed captioning for tons, obviously, but we could have closed captioning. We would suggest that if we wanted closed captioning, there is a, a version where they would do post-management maintenance, because if you've ever watched a show with closed captioning on, you know, that sometimes the words on the screen might not match what the person is saying. They would go in and update the closed captioning to actually reflect what was said. They would be responsible for putting up, uh, you know, nameplates, oh, it's the mayor talking, and they do it all the time, so they're professionals at it. And then at the back end, right now, the meeting's done, it's recorded, well, now Dave, that key guy, has to come in, he has to trim the meeting, he might have to go in and redo some timestamps, and then he has to upload it to the web for viewing. Well, the web, they take care of all of that for us, so. At times, when Dave has been on vacation in, uh, St. Thomas, he's been sitting in the lobby of the hotel room uploading video for us. This would just take it completely out of his hands, and, and it would, so pre-up some IT time, it would eliminate someone's recording meetings in the bathrooms, and I think it would be a much better overall product. And so as such, you have two quotes for you in, uh, both from Security and Sound, if you remember a few years back, we decided that Security and Sound is sort of our audio/video provider for this room, for the EOC of the police department, for the new Public Works building. So we went to them and said, "What, what would it take?" The first quote was in the eighty thousand dollar range, I believe we pulled that up. The first quote was forty-six thousand from Security and Sound, and then a new encoder from Granicus that we need any. It's the new encoder that allows us to get rid of the failing piece of equipment back there. So we would have fifty-two thousand dollars in the equipment cost if we, you know, just updated this, if we bought the manage, agenda management software and just updated the equipment to what we have in our, and we would still have someone in the bathroom recording it. That would be fifty-two thousand. Otherwise, if we wanted to go with the Granicus solution, where they're actually doing the recording, um, we would have, we would have an upfront cost from Granicus of fifty thousand dollars, and that's the camera system. We would end up with three cameras, they would all be digital, um, they would all be the same age, and they could, uh, they could run them. It's an advanced encoder is another ten thousand dollars, that's what we would need for some of the closed captioning. There's an option that allows social media streaming, if we ever decided we wanted to stream on Facebook, or Twitter, or whatever, social media streaming would always stream the meetings, uh, the social media instead of just from a website. And then we would need only twenty-eight thousand dollars in upgrades from Security and Sound. So it, it is more expensive to take the more robust option, but the staff feels it would be worth the investment. If you have some questions, I can try to answer them, or we'll answer them.
I just missed that one, but there'd be, and then twenty-eight hundred dollars for the closed captioning then?
Yeah, that, there would be a one-time cost of twenty-eight hundred dollars for the closed captioning, and then there would be annual cost of thirty-eight hundred, which would be optional.
So you got your annual cost and your one-time cost.
Right. There would be the annual cost with or without, you know, we, right now, we're paying, I think in the memo, in, in table one, I think I talked about, uh, one-time pass, with just Granicus for the agenda management, and what we use now would be twelve thousand four hundred, um, the one-time pass, if we go to the more robust version, it's a, it's an increase in cost, it'd go up to thirty thousand if we did the closed captioning and the social media. If we didn't do those, it would be about, oh, sixty-seven hundred dollars less, so we, or around twenty-four thousand dollars.
Um, what is the peak agenda management?
Peak agenda management is the agenda management software that, that the clerk would like to improve the creation of the agendas, make it more streamlined and efficient for everybody, with, probably less, less errors that can sometimes creep in.
So it's not an optional?
Right. The peak manage, that would be, that would be required.
I know we've spent a lot of time in, in all, all the years, upgrading our technology, and it's been something that we've been talking about all the time. So I would definitely be forward, and we must right up to the top of the agenda, and keep that moving forward, that'd be my, other thing I would kind of go on to. It makes sense, especially with closed captions, so that's gonna be taken care of.
And I forgot to mention one thing about Security and Sound, you know, they would update some of the equipment in that room, but then we would also get the monitor mounted up there on the boiler walls, so the council would be able to see what was being streamed at the time. And then there would be a mic indication light up there too, so we would know if your mics were on. Has been right up on occasion, and it would be nice to know that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I appreciate this, and I think the closed captioning, as I've said before, because it's a really important addition, it'd be so much more accessible to a lot of folks. So I appreciate that. Yeah, some motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Granicus for the agenda management and approve the equipment upgrades as identified in table three.
Number one?
Second.
Any further session? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes five zero. Okay, that'll bring us to our city attorney report, someone?
Um, sir, mayor, members of the council, I don't have anything for the meeting at this time, but we do have a closed session at the end, we'll be presenting.
Okay, well, take us to our city minister, engineer report number nine, next work session draft agenda.
So the, uh, the only thing we have for the draft agenda for the next work session is an update from the city attorney on the latest legislation on, THC and marijuana legalization, and what implications that might have for municipalities. Um, and then, uh, finance director will give the first, uh, first, uh, look at, uh, but the budgeting process for the twenty-twenty-four budget. So those are the two items that have been on the schedule for a while, so that's what we're proposing to remain on the schedule.
And we should probably keep that at five o'clock, so who knows all the stuff that comes up with legislation. And then, police chief, he's still here, and all the stuff that's gonna have to do with that, you know, so, any other thoughts, uh, questions? Oh, I made a motion?
Steve, I can make a motion, uh, to just approve the work session in, uh, in prison.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that passes five zero. Okay, next thing on our agenda is public comments, it's an opportunity for the public to address the city council. The council will not engage in discussion, take the action on items presented at this time, or with the council meeting issues to stay out for follow-up or consideration in a future meeting. Um, we obviously have the fire department, uh, report and discussion after that, which, uh, we're gonna be able to get people cards and talk about, answer questions. Uh, so if you can hold that for the fire department report, that'd be great. So if you do wanna come up, speaker should state their name and home address of the podium before speaking, thanks.
Did you turn speakers on out here? There's a lot of people out here, they can't hear you.
They should, they're not on?
No, they're not on.
How do we get this?
No, they're, they're attached to the wall.
There's somebody in the back.
Whatever, just, there's a lot of people wanting to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just the new, we're on the new.
And we're getting a new system?
Yeah.
Richie Anderson, you talked loud enough, so come on up.
Uh, Richie Anderson, I live at thirty-two oh five, Crystal Bay Road. I, uh, come before you to, uh, ask maybe to think about an adoption of the citizen of the month. And, um, my first, uh, recommendation would be for Cass Holloway, and, uh, I put it on, uh, later, I took it, it came out. So, uh, whereas during coffee of the month with the mayor in May of two thousand and twenty-three, whereas after much capitalization of the discussion dominated by a citizen in regards to the fire separation from Long Lake and interruptions by the schoolyard bully to the mayor, whereas Seth's citizen of the month, Cass Holloway, was moved to action and finally called out the Orno schoolyard bully for disrupting council meetings and coffee sessions with the mayor. The schoolyard bully took exception to Mr. Holloway, and after some belly-to-belly jousting and posturing, the citizen of the month tried to quell the situation, and a heartfelt try to make peace action on his part, asked the bully to go out in the parking lot and dance. A dance, nothing more, could have been a peaceful and amiable solution, but the schoolyard bully would not go out, and a peace officer had to intervene. Whereas as the situation was resolved, the schoolyard bully, this is all on video.
Why don't you just say my name, pussy? Say my name.
The schoolyard bully.
Brad Erickson.
Is seen taunting on video.
What an asshole.
Calling the citizen an effin' fag, and the citizen turned the other cheek and left without further qualification. That is why, as a citizen of Orno, I recommend this action to you for a citizen who has the interest of Orno as a prime concern. Thank you for consideration, sincerely, citizen Rick Anderson.
Chelsea Weidrich, I mean, we wanna talk about the schoolyard bully. Mr. Walsh, you're the kid in the playground that kills ants with the night of life, so. Uh, since you're starting all your speeches off with a quote, I decided to start this one as well. Uh, by Dr. Seuss, it is, a person is a person no matter how small. Um, I have to wonder, when all of the cities are combining forces in the, in the fire department, why you feel that you have to branch out? All I can guess is, uh, it boils down to your unfounded ego, so that's what it always seems to boil down to. Um, I do have to commend you, though, on making your, your term a four-year term, because otherwise you still wouldn't be there. We all know that liars and cheaters get called out quickly. Um, I mean, if I were you, I'd save myself a little bit of dignity and go with Jay's eloquently-written letter, his resignation letter, because that's probably the best chance you've got. Um, and with that, I'll end with another Dr. Seuss quote, Seuss quote for you, mister mayor. Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened.
Anybody else for public comments?
We'll try to do this one calmly. James Elder, one one five, South Brown Road. I've been up here many times, as you know, and I'm gonna try again to strongly urge, uh, Orno and Long Lake to get back to the negotiating table and settle this, um, this dispute before some irreversibly, or irreversible and cost of things happen. It will be the best thing for firefighters as a group. They're uncertain, they're stressed, there's internecine fighting now among them, and it's all because of this long, unsettled dispute. The citizens are, should be concerned about things because there are now revelations of the fire service area being disputed as a bar. There are lawsuits regarding the shared services fire contract. There's some fire response times issues because of the way the two departments might end up being separated. And the taxpayers should be concerned about financial costs. Just from the rough, um, evaluation of the needs assessment that James had done, operating costs for the fire department, which are around five hundred and fifty thousand now, would increase to one point six million thereafter because of these expenses. Given the abominious, divisive statements by Orno over the past few years, one has to wonder whether neighboring communities will be willing to partner with Orno to share the costs, if it should want to go alone and partner back up with the, some of the members of the agreement. Capital expenditures will likely approach eight million or more, um, over the next five years. Are these costs accurate? Are they necessary? Are they reasonable? We don't know, because we don't have any data. So please, get us the data, so that the public will understand what the issues are in this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you just hold that for the fire discussion, that's gonna be next. And if you have something separate of the fire discussion, you wanna come up for public comments, that would be appreciated, thanks.
Mike Hart, twenty-five ten, Casco Point Road. For twenty-one years resident of Orno, while I've not paid attention to all the city issues over the years, in the past six months, I've taken a deeper dive into some of the actions of the city. I'll focus on two particular items, the public works facility and the fire services the city has and is proposing to change. These represent two of the top three things, along with police protection, I believe should be of the utmost importance to city government and the residents of the city. That being said, when major changes like these are proposed, I believe the residents should be fully informed and a lot of input, and in fact, the city should go out of their way to make sure that, in this case, over the years, not all the residents, including myself, have paid that close attention to some issues. My observation and experience these past few months are that the mayor and the council are making these decisions with very little input for the citizens. I question a lot, I don't own the public works facility, but that ship has sailed, so I'll focus on the fire department. At a breakfast with the mayor in March, I was promised that by May meeting, we would have all the costs and needs assessment and final projected cost for the changes being taken for the fire department. While the report was fairly thorough on the fire apparatus and the city needs to start their own department, no detailed cost was included in that report, including one of the largest, that being the remodeling of the current public works facilities to serve as the new fire station. The council has already made the decision to break away from Long Lake, with no accurate cost being shared with all of us, the residents. We now have duplicate costs for the next two and a half years, the two fire chiefs being paid for by the Orno residents, among other very large expenditures. While the cost of decision-making processes are of concern, what about the lives of the firefighters out of the Long Lake Fire Department? They're having to make difficult personal decisions on what department they will ultimately represent based on the decision of a few people up here, not the residents of the city. Is that the way you wanna treat the people that are taking care of us every day, that are there to take care of us when things happen? And for you firefighters, I'm not sure I'd wanna be in your position, be led by a councilman or fire chief that are marching to their own drum. What decisions will they make down the road that may affect you personally again? And the mayor typically ends his, uh, comments with the quotes over the quote tags. Blank noted, he appeared before the city council across the month, and pointed out that there's been no citizen input on the project, no transparency. Blank noted, a number of the current city council members ran on transparency, and now seems like those city council members have become what they ran against. Blank stated, the police project is now becoming a debacle, since the city council could not wait to get the projected cost priced correctly and to obtain public input prior to approving the project. Blank stated, he sees this as failure of leadership by the entire city council. Do you know who that blank is in that comment? It's Mr. Mayor when he was a resident of this city about eight years ago. Mr. Mayor, you couldn't have said better for me how I feel right now, as a citizen of this city. And I'm sure a lot of them feel the same way, because I've had some discussions with them. We're being left out in the open, you're not gonna transparent with us. The fire station conversations need to stop the current trajectory, and obtain real input and facts, and all involved before moving one step forward.
Does anybody have, does anybody have fire stuff to talk to, or are we supposed to send public comments? Does anybody have stuff that's not fire department-related for public comments?
No, I was looking for the comment forum.
I guess I'm the schoolyard bully. I wanna remind everybody that you sent me a Holocaust video which invoked the extermination of six million Jews a couple of years back. Right? And I'm the bully. You're a fear monger, that's what you are.
You're a fear monger, that's what you are. And you, sir, engage with hate groups, don't you? I like your yellow and black old porch boxeter out there, aren't those the probably colors? Yeah, you don't know? Go figure. So you still haven't answered questions unlike what you said you did a couple of meetings ago about the J6 experience. You know, if we had representation out there in Washington DC on January 6th of 2021, I'd like to know about it. I'd like to know what you were doing, who you were with. I don't know why those answers are so hard for you. If you weren't there, just say you weren't there, but you know you were there and we did not discuss that. You did not answer those questions. And you, sir, have not answered the question why you would send me such a vile, vulgar, filthy video. Fear. The politics of fear, that's how you run your city. It's despicable. You are a despicable human being, as are you. Make no mistake about it, you will not survive another election. So you should probably kick the can on the fire department down the road for the next mayor because I will use everything in my power to make sure that you no longer sit in that seat. And you, sir, with your little shit-eating grin, same goes for you. You need to answer some questions. I don't know what's so hard about this. You want to defer and deflect and smile and act like it's no big deal? You don't think that shit was a big deal? It was a big deal. You don't think what you sent me is a big deal? It's a big deal. When are we going to talk about this, Mr. Transparency? You want to break up the city down there? You want to break up Long Lake? You manufacture a problem and then you ride in as the savior? You're an asshole. That's what you are. Complete and total asshole. And don't talk to me about swearing when you send me a video with the F-word, the A-word, the S-word, and every other goddamn word out there. Sit up there and act like you have got nothing to hide? You've got a lot to hide and we all know it. And you don't have as much support as you think you do. Let the people decide.
Anybody else for public comments tonight before we move into the fire discussion?
Really with a smile on the grin?
Hi, I'm Jason Hedin. I live at 2508 Arco Lane. And I will tell you that I've been watching this nonsense online from a distance and I can't believe how silly some of the people are at the company's meetings. I have engaged some of these people online. There's nothing behind what they're saying. You ask for details, there's nothing, absolutely nothing. I'm sick of it and that's the only reason I'm here. Thank you.
And why don't they sit down and talk about it? You guys sit down and talk, right? I have no idea. Anybody else for public comments?
Jane Agar, 1886, dressed for our girls. Richie Anderson, wherever you are, I'm a little disappointed tonight. I mean, you've been such a good steward of the community and helping out so much and tonight you come up and put a purely political statement up here, which is entirely inaccurate. I was at the coffee with Mayor Walsh and it was not the bully who was the aggressor, it was Cass Holloway. So I'm sorry, Richie Anderson, your supporting a bully and violence just frustrates me. That's the only way I can put it. That's not even what I'm here to talk about. But I heard Richie and I was so appalled by what he said. If anyone doesn't believe me, watch my YouTube video. It clearly shows Cass Holloway giving up and being the aggressor. There's absolutely no question about that. Now, I had lunch with Cass afterwards and, you know, we talked a little bit about it and I understand your frustration, but I cannot condone the approach he took that day. Today, what I'm here to talk about is you, Mayor Walsh, and your comments. I heard someone else say your comments and I'm going, oh, this is wonderful. Because one more time, when you told your own comments against you in the Lake Meditaca Patch, which I don't think is around anymore, in 2012, when you lost your bid to be on the city council, you said a couple of things. And one of them is, the question was, are you satisfied with public safety services being provided to city residents? First thing this guy says, I applaud the Long Lake Fire Department. I mean, really? After everything we've heard, I applaud the Long Lake Fire Department and fire safety seems to be working very well. I would encourage the continuation of the partnership with Long Lake. It's not my words, those are your words when you were running to get elected. Where is that, Dennis Walsh? Where's the one who cares about the community? Further, how would you encourage the average citizen to become more engaged in local governments? The next question. Anytime a citizen has an issue, I would encourage them to call me and discuss the issue. I believe in the open door policy at all times. And with that said, I would also encourage them to join us at council meetings and to tell us in open form about any and all issues, blah, 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 blah. Really? That's why public comments are... Look at you, you can't even handle it. Public comments are moved to the end of it. This week, you decide, oh, we'll put public comments before the fire station so we can't get ripped afterwards? These are your words. I applaud the Long Lake Fire Department and fire safety seems to be working very well. Thank you for not standing up to what he said.
John Eck, wonderful, Lake City, Minnesota, where I think I intend to stay, to be honest with you. I have friends and family here, but, or in the area, but I don't mind the situation under request for resignations and I guess I'd like to know what the status is, but I've never heard such applause for resignations, so that's from wonderful Lake City.
Anybody else for public comments tonight before we move into the fire discussion? Okay, I will close the public comments and we will come to the fire department and we'll tie in the draft fire needs assessment presentation by Chief Van Allen.
I appreciate the time tonight to go through the presentation of the draft needs assessment. I'd also like to thank our citizens and community members. I'm Fire Chief James Van Allen, before you tonight, to present the Orno fire needs assessment. This assessment reviews fire and EMS needs for the city of Orno and how best to provide those services and improve on it. In this needs assessment, we identified some items for improvement, but this does not mean the firefighters are not doing their job. They are doing it very well. And in fact, with the limited resources and support that they have, they do an amazing job that the department has never been better. Everything in the needs assessment is based on how we can improve for our firefighters and our citizens. As we move through this presentation, I would ask that the council hold your questions until the end of the presentation. But I do want to say that I understand how stressful this is on our firefighters and our firefighters' families. It's been stressful on me also. I moved from Long Lake to Orno because I believe it's the best place for us to be an entire team. See if I can get through this before we get anywhere. It is the only city that I can work with to keep all the firefighters together. It's the only city that can support the organization and allow us to create the fire department that the firefighters deserve and the citizens deserve. I've been here for six months and I've relished all the support from Adam and the department heads. They have been a tremendous help with the needs assessment and the presentation. Thank you, Laura, for being there for me for that. They are genuinely excited to help create a first-class fire department, just like all other departments that they have. All of the work I'm doing, will continue to do this, or all the work I'm doing and will continue to do is for the improvement of the service for the citizens and the firefighters. It is fantastic to have the ability to analyze the data, find out weaknesses and develop strengths to improve upon them. My goal is to work towards keeping the entire team together and to know that you have the support to keep improving as we move forward. So let's talk a little history on the Orno fire service. Orno has been served by four fire departments from about, we can go back to about the 60s. There were the Long Lake Fire Department, the Maple Plain Fire Department, the Wayzata Fire Department, and the Mound Fire Department. Their fire service area is covered by the map to the lower left. In 1980, the city of Orno did a study on response times. And from that study, there were some changes that was made in 1982. The city of Long Lake assumes responsibility for the southeast portion of Orno from the Wayzata Fire Department. That's kind of shown by the middle map. Well, that is the purple, Long Lake is the orange, Mound is the green, and Maple Plain is the blue. Along with that study in 1980, the city identified a need for a possible station down in the Navarre area to help improve response times. Fast forward to 2002, the city of Long Lake assumed responsibility for the northwest portion of Orno from Maple Plain. In 2002, the long-term contract was also signed and the creation of Station 2 started. In 2004, the Excelsior Fire Department stands up Station 2 and in 2007, the city of Long Lake assumes responsibility for the Navarre Call area. 2018, the city of Long Lake assumes responsibility for the eastern side of Orno, the Wayzata was currently operating. So the lower map on the lower right kind of shows where we are today. We're just talking about the history of the fire service in Orno has been ever changing since the 80s for the past 40 years. We've moved from having four or five fire departments covering us to having one fire department covering us. And it's all due to trying to improve service. So the current situation, the contract with the Long Lake Fire Department and the Medina, or excuse me, the city of Long Lake and Medina expires at the end of 2025. The negotiation team has been ongoing and has not resulted in any agreements. Currently, Orno pays about 85% of the budget, that's for 2023, and accounts for about 72% of the calls. In 2023, Orno is budgeting $895,000 for fire service. That is more than contractually obligated. Contractually, they are obligated to spend $632,000 in the budget. The extra money is for capital. Above and beyond what's contractually obligated. They've been doing this for more than the past three years. And that's because they identified last year with us that the current fleet is at or near its end of life. The current fire capital fund is underfunded, as talked about in the needs assessment, and it's been underfunded since the 2002 contract was signed. $100,000 a year, starting in 2022, is not enough to fund capital for a fire department. There was one increase of 3% during the lifespan of this contract so far. There's currently no defined response standard for any of the cities. The fire department meets a rural response standard overall. We'll get back to some of what the response standard means here in a couple of slides. This model leads to recruiting and retention challenges and also leads to inefficient deployment of personnel. And again, we'll talk a little bit about, more about that when we start talking about some duty crews. Anything to add from the fire negotiating team on that one? So the questions that's come about is why start an Orno municipal fire department? That's been one of the main questions that's come through on a lot of the comment cards. And again, I appreciate all the comments that have come back on those comment cards. We have received quite a few, as you can tell from the packet, and we encourage more to come. So the big thing is a contract ending. So this gives the opportunity for Orno to start a municipal fire department. They're able to establish that local oversight of emergency services that they currently have with the police department, too. Orno is committed to the best possible service for its citizens, is well positioned to manage and resource a fire department long-term. We plan to achieve and improve the following: the level of service, fire and life safety education, the facilities and equipment for the health of the firefighters, the health and life safety code enforcement, emergency service coordination, and NFPA compliance with our apparatus within 10 years of this changeover possible. One of the questions that came when we talked about this was emergency service coordination and they asked, was there a problem currently? There are currently known deficiencies between the fire department and the police department. They've worked very, very well. But what I've seen since I've been here, been part of the Orno department and the Orno team, is a synergy like I haven't seen before, right? We've discussed the possibilities of cross-training, enhancing our coordination between officers and us. Officers have been stopping by my desk and just copying in and saying, hey, maybe we can, you know, do some training on this, or could we share a prop? This forceful entry prop would be great to share. Also, the camaraderie that Corey stops in every once in a while, we have discussions about response, about different calls that come through, when I see them on active 911, we have discussions about that. Not only that, I've been asked to attend their training and also invited to lead some of their training. So we can talk about the capital, the capital plan. Regardless of the way going forward, capital must be increased. There's no question about that. The needs assessment CIP achieves NFPA compliance within its first 10 years. We're assuming that we will be able to use our solely owned equipment, such as Engine 21, Rescue 21, the command and the ladder truck. We're also assuming that the negotiating team will help us buy out the Long Lake shares and Medina shares of some of the select jointly owned equipment. The Orno Fire Needs Assessment Vehicle and Equipment CIP for 10 years is $5.6 million or $563,000 per year going forward. We used $565,000 for you, those of you doing math, on all of our courses of action analysis. The proposed city of Long Lake's fire CIP for the 2023 years presented at last year's council amounted to about $7 million or $705,000 per year of service. Orno's 85% of that would have been roughly about $600,000. Negotiating team, are there any other questions or comments on the CIP side? So the emergency response structure, this is where I said we'd come back and talk about NFPA standards, response standards. Orno is currently in a suburban demand zone, which lands in the 500 per thousand or 2,000 population per square mile. And there's different pockets within the city, whether it's rural, urban, or suburban, and you can see that on the map on the right-hand side. Rural is largely ring-defined areas, suburban being more yellow, and then the tan being more urban. Station 2's weekday daytime response is 16 minutes to get a truck on scene and Station 1's weekday daytime response is 13 minutes and 49 seconds. So Station 2, out of Station 2, we're not meeting the rural response time standard, which again, we're actually a suburban zone. 71% of our calls for service would best be served by a duty crew made up of four firefighters. That's the medicals and the fire alarms, so those are 71% of our calls. There's about, as we've talked about in the needs assessment, the true fire cars are relatively small percentage of what these firefighters do on a daily basis. The duty crew model that we've talked about will also improve the deployment of our personnel. Rather than paging one or two stations out for every call that we go to, we would be able to utilize a duty crew of four to cover those calls. So we wouldn't be having to page out and have 13 people show up for a medical or 11 people show up for a fire alarm. This in turn has helped or should help improve recruitment and retention of our firefighters. Now, part-time duty crew wages will add to the budget for that increased level of service.
You know, I just, I think it's important to highlight here that the response times that we have are not a reflection of, or firefight.
Right.
It's how we set it up and our daytime responsiveness in this is a huge issue. And particularly in Station Number Two, where you can see, you know, the rural is the lowest standard of responsiveness and we're not hitting it. But it's important that people understand that that isn't because our firefighters aren't responding. They're doing their job, there's just no one there to do it. And when he says all calls, just to help everyone understand what that means, is during the day at Fire Station Number Two, we get a medical call or we get a fire alarm call. We don't know who's We don't know who's available to respond on Fire Station Number Two. Fire Station Number Two is referred to also as kind of the bar station. So what the department does is when a call comes in, it goes into, to Hennebun County Dispatch, Hennebun County Dispatch, which is not included in these times, takes about two and a half minutes to respond. They put out an all-call, and that pages every firefighter that's available and says, we have something going on in Station Number Two's region. Anyone that can get there, drop what you're doing and get in there. And so they're coming from further stations to try to make up for the fact that we don't have enough firefighters to cover Station Number Two during the day. As a result of that, we're doing tremendously well, given that really limited, it's about a nine-minute travel time between Fire Station One and Fire Station Number Two. It's taken Hennebun County two and a half minutes to even dispatch it. So our firefighters, we're really proud of what they're doing and how efficient they are under the circumstances. What the duty crew does is it puts firefighters during the day, which is our most vulnerable spot, it puts four of them there in this proposal, and all of a sudden, our response times for that region go from, you know, thirteen or sixteen minutes, all of a sudden, we can be there, those are four or five minute response times.
That's correct.
So this is a, 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 a issue that we have, and we have to kind of understand why that's happening. It's nothing to do with the quality of the response of firefighters we have, but they're missing the framework to be effective, and that's what the duty crew does. So just wanted to.
James, could you, could you highlight, because I know there were some questions I had around. So if you add duty crews during the day, how does that affect the current volunteers? And like, and their call arrangements?
Yeah, their call percentages.
Sure, absolutely. We haven't, we haven't fleshed it out one hundred percent, but as it has gone in other models, they use the duty crew. Um, sometimes they require the firefighters, the paid-on call firefighters to put in hours. Uh, others do not, they ask for other part-time firefighters to fill in those hours. And then all of those calls that are covered by the duty crews typically will not count against their percentages. So currently, to be a firefighter, in order to receive pension credits, you have so many calls for service that you have to respond to, um, from your station or all calls. And so right now, the daytime calls that happen, um, you know, six in the morning to six at night, are also included in those numbers for each one of the firefighters. As we move forward, we would look at and work with the firefighters that we hire, um, depending on which course of action we choose, um, ahead of time to talk to them about, um, removing those out of that, or, you know, how do we work that percentage to make it easier for them, so. Okay? So we, we settled on four courses of action for the needs assessment. Uh, and we'll kind of break down each individual course of action on the subsequent slides. Course of Action One is Orno assumes control of the existing fire department. Uh, Course of Action Two is a taxable fire district or joint powers that everybody's, uh, heard of in the area. Course of Action Three is the Municipal Fire Department with paid-on, with just paid-on call firefighters. Course of Action Four, which is the one that staff recommends, would be the Municipal Fire Department with duty crews and also the paid-on call firefighters. So Course of Action One, uh, we talked a little bit about this particular one. This is actually from the letter that was sent from Orno to Long Lake back in two thousand and eighteen, this is their option, or that it's option one. Um, so Orno assumes control of that exists, the existing fire department, uh, you know, from the Long Lake Fire Department. Uh, and as you see, the pros, this is the least expensive. Uh, we have local oversight of the department. Uh, it does improve that synergy that we talked about with emergency services. Uh, it also does provide access to Orno's administrative support. Not only IT and HR, um, which are not at Long Lake, um, but also the mechanic, we have access to that. We have access to the fuel depot, so we can get fuel twenty-four seven. Cons to this, um, are the fleet facilities remain, still remain undefunded and unsustainable. The response standard still remains on that rural, uh, demand zone. And Orno residents still disproportionately resource the department. Uh, one of the questions came through, and it's like, what do you mean by disproportionately resource? So what that means is that Orno has been paying more for fire service than the service they actually have been using. So they've been supplementing other cities' fire service. That's what they've been paying for. Uh, so you saw in the beginning, Orno pays eighty-five percent of the fire service, and they use seventy-two percent of the calls. Uh, so we would look at trying to make that better. This model or this course of action, uh, obviously is the least expensive. Uh, an average per household is two hundred and eighty dollars per household, is what we're showing from a funding perspective. So that's seven eighty-seven is the standard, uh, operating capital cost for Orno, where that ain't ninety-five, we talked about that earlier. Uh, that includes extra money for the site so far for capital. Ten-year operating costs is there at the end for people that had asked for some sort of ten-year, um, operating cost, is what it would look like. And that's both operating and capital. And that's, those are Orno costs, right? Yeah, exactly. So those are Orno costs, that nine million dollars. Anything else to add from the negotiating team? So Course of Action Two is a taxable fire district or JPA. This course of action has been talked about quite a bit, um, with other cities. Uh, we used a conceptual district that was presented at the future fire service meetings that have been going on for the past two, three years. Uh, it also assumes an added alarm tax distribution of costs, which is pretty standard for joint powers or a taxable fire district. Pros to this, uh, you have possible capital avoidance as we move forward, uh, in the future. Uh, you don't need five engines for, you know, three fire departments or whatever it is. You, you only need one backup engine or maybe two backup engines, and that's it. So, um, that's where you see some possible cost avoidance for the capital. You have a larger pool of firefighters to pull from duty crews if you were actually to use duty crews. Uh, cons to this one, um, pos, dis, burden is disproportionate services again. On this particular one, we took a look at the eleven cities that were kind of proposed in this conceptual fire district. Uh, out of those eleven cities, uh, Orno amounted to thirty-four percent of the market value, and only about twenty-two percent of the calls. So again, they would be funding thirty-four percent of the fire service, and they would only use twenty-two percent of the service. So again, they would be supplementing surrounding areas' fire service. Uh, the limited operational control, uh, there would be one vote out of eleven in this particular one, so uh, you have little oversight of capital and operational expenses. The response standard on this one still remains rural unless they do move to duty crews. Uh, the timeframe to complete this district is also a con. So as you look at this average per household for the city of Orno, would amount to six hundred and one dollars per household. That's an increase of three hundred and twenty-two dollars over what is currently being paid by each household in the city of Orno. If we, if this one were moving to duty crews, that cost would skyrocket to seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per household for this particular model, and that's an increase of four hundred and forty-five over the current household cost. Negotiating team, is there anything else on that? So Course of Action Three, uh, as you see up on the board, uh, this is, uh, I, I like to call this one the option number two from the two thousand and eighteen letter. Uh, this is an Orno Municipal Fire Department, solely owned by the city of Orno with paid-on call firefighters. Uh, the one thing that's nice about this one, uh, the equipment plan for this course of action is sustainable and achieves NFPA compliance within the first ten years. So the pros to this one, we have local oversight again, uh, we improve our emergency service coordination, and we have a sustainable capital plan. The cons to this one are recruitment challenges due to the paid-on call model. Uh, we're dependent back on that unsustainable model for future success. We're still at that rural response performance for the entire city of Orno. Uh, it's an inefficient model for use of our personnel, and we cannot phase in and switch from Long Lake to Orno on, on this particular one. So this cost, we have, we have up there with and without partners. So without partners, uh, this cost would be four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, for the average household. With partners, it would be three hundred and fifteen dollars. So that with partner cost would be an increase over today's cost of thirty-five dollars per household. Anything else from the negotiating team? So Course of Action Four, this of course is the course of action that staff recommends. This course of action, uh, is a hybrid model, uh, it has daytime duty crews, um, and it's paid-on call firefighters. It also has a sustainable capital plan, achieves NFPA compliance within the first ten years. Uh, pros on this one, we have the local oversight again. We improve our level of service to whatever, or response standard we want to go with, better than rural, whether it's suburban or urban. We improve our fire and life safety education, we use the duty crews to be able to do that. Uh, it's better for the health of our firefighters, we're not alerting them for seventy-one percent of the calls during the day, uh, anymore, so they're not having to jump out of their skin as everybody did tonight when the pagers went off, right? Everybody when that pager went off, I think everybody jumped up a little bit, and I can tell you that your blood pressure skyrocketed from about sixty to eighty beats per minute all the way up to a hundred and twenty, because that's what happens every time the firefighter's pagers go off. We improve our health and life safety code enforcement, and we also improve our emergency service coordination. The cons to this one, obviously, are the increased costs. So we show both costs with and without partners. Uh, the average household with, without partners is five hundred and eleven dollars, and with partners is three hundred and sixty-eight. So that's, for that improved level of service, it's an extra eighty-eight dollars, uh, per average household. Anything else from the negotiating team without particular? So as we move forward with our recommended course of action, obviously, we recommend Course of Action Four, uh, which would be establishing the Orno Fire Department, adopting a suburban demand zone for our response model or, or a version of that. Uh, we would like to establish daytime duty crew staffing structure to improve the, to achieve that response model, um, and make commitments to twenty-four seven duty crews, uh, and look at, uh, full-time fire inspector and fire tech admin in the future, maybe five to ten years down the road. Initiate apparatus and equipment purchases starting in twenty-three, uh, to purchase new, new types of apparatus. The lead times have skyrocketed from what used to be, you know, one year to fourteen months, have now gone to twenty to, you know, thirty year, or excuse me, twenty, twenty months to thirty-six months. We would ask that, uh, we look at extending contracts for services out to our surrounding municipalities, just like we have now. Very similar contracts for services that the Orno Police and Orno Public Works Departments have been successful with. Uh, we look at adopting the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, uh, the, uh, formula for, uh, cost for service. Uh, that's a third land value, a third population, a third call hours. And this recommendation could be done at a phased approach by moving Station Two call area early, um, which would, which we're calling out as Course of Action Four A, or waiting until January first of two thousand and twenty-six, which is Four B. Uh, but before we kind of get into that, um, we want to talk a little bit about what the fire negotiating team has, has come back with in January. So we, we took what Long Lake's latest offer was, uh, back from January, and costed it out to Course of Action Four, what the financial impacts would be for the city of Orno. Uh, this one turns out to be very costly to the Orno residents. As we reviewed their, uh, proposal, uh, Long Lake was asking for a two-million-dollar lump sum payment. They were asking for the city of Orno to donate their Station One ownership, which accounts for about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equity. They're asking for a, a lease of seventy thousand dollars per year for the next ten years. We just looked at a ten-year average, we didn't go past that, um, which led to a seven hundred thousand dollar, um, expenditure over that ten-year cost. Um, years, the cost for service, as we looked at, uh, the needs assessment in Course of Action Four, that cost actually, um, is one point nine million dollars over that ten years, or a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the city of Orno is what we would be charging them. Uh, but we, they only want to pay us seventy thousand dollars per year in their, in their latest offers. So that's a, a difference of one point two million dollars, uh, between those two right there. Uh, we would also, uh, the revenues coming in, uh, we would, we would purchase Long Lake shares, or, yeah, value of Long Lake share ownership is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So we've got expenditures of five point four million. We have revenues that would be coming in of approximately one point, one point one zero million. Uh, so the total cost of ownership over that ten years is four point four million dollars to the city of Orno. So an annual cost of four hundred and forty thousand dollars, or an average cost per household of three hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents, over and above what you would normally pay for fire service. So, uh, we recommend that the, the council, uh, direct the negotiating team to focus on the following from the city of Long Lake and future negoti, negotiations. Uh, kind of the disposition of Station Ones is the big one, whether it's a hundred percent owned by, um, the city of Orno, or we establish a shared use ownership and use agreement. Uh, the second piece would, uh, the disposition of the, uh, shared ownership equipment, uh, the tenders, the donated items, the fleet, um, and then also concentrate on some of the loose equipment, the SCBA's, the turnout gears, and some of that. And then work through kind of that transition time that we've talked about. Did I miss anything on their, their offer?
No, I mean, just, just to make it really clear about that offer is, we give them, they ask for two million dollars for what they described as, you know, getting a term key business. Uh, Orno has funded that, and fund that at eighty-five percent right now. So I've always felt like eighty-five percent of that has already been ours, but they asked for, for two million dollars. Then the eight hundred and fifty thousand, which is, they wanted us to give us the half of Station Number One. So just to back up a little, um, Orno and Long Lake share fifty-fifty in ownership of Fire Station Number One. Fire Station Number Two is a hundred percent owned by Orno. But of Fire Station, uh, Number One, the two cities had a, had an agreement between administrators to determine a value of that. Orno did an appraisal, that's what the fifty is based on, which is one half of the value. Long Lake did that, um, they did an appraisal, never provided us a copy of it. But we understand that was higher than ours, and, but we used the lower of those numbers. But, so they want us to give them two million dollars, donate our half of the building. That's where somewhere between eight hundred and fifty or a million dollars. Then, we're gonna lease back the building that we already gave them half of it for, for seventy thousand dollars a year for ten years. And then, re, supplement their cost of services for the next ten years by for sure half, and that's very conservative. And if we go to duty crews and we're in this agreement with Long Lake, then they're only paying a fraction of their actual expense of services, so a supplement. If we expand this, so this comes to five point four million dollars is what they were asking for us to do. And if we did another piece of that list to extend it out, part of their offer said twenty years, and then that would take Orno was, uh, to eight million dollars. So this agreement was beneficial to have from them, so we understood what it would take to buy out their portion of the fire service. So now that we can compare that against, how would those costs compare to what if we just have our own? And that's what we're doing here tonight, is comparing what our options are in front of us with what we can do on our own. And then the other question that's being asked is, are we a city that's okay with having a rural responsiveness? And with medicals being seventy percent of our calls, are we okay with having sixteen minutes of response time that's after dispatch, which is closer to eighteen to twenty minutes? Um, are we okay with that? And so that's the other piece that's in here about this offer, which, if we take this offer, which is written, and this is their formal offer, um, you know, this, this is what's holding up a merger. He's asking for Orno to continue to supplement the cost of Long Lake's coverage.
Any questions?
No, so I mean, Matt, you did a good job blocking it for this. As a lot of you guys know in the audience, I'm married to a firefighter, and, uh, part of what you wanted to say, just pay, pay this, to be honest. Just to put this to bed, because you are right, it is hard on firefighter families and the firefighters. But we also have to look at, you know, this is the taxpayers' money, right? Would you guys be comfortable with us doing this, right? Giving away half of a building? Giving leases that way, so.
What?
Can I ask questions?
So, staff recommends course of action, or staff recommendations for course of action four A, if we move down that, that point. And we've got recommendations for both four A and four B in the next couple of slides here, and then we'll, we'll stand for questions from the council. We also have some generic timelines, or some timelines in there for each course of action. Those slides are a little busy, but I'll point out a couple of the big bullet points. So on this particular one, four A, that would be moving Station Two call area early, so we'd be standing up a department in twenty-twenty-four in the Nevada Station. That service area would start July first of twenty-twenty-four. The department would assume responsibility for Orno's portion of the wheel and drive station, or that's what we've worked towards, in service area for July to January first of twenty-twenty-six, so that would be a hundred percent Orno at that point in time. Costs of the course of action four costs that were listed previously on the slides, and also the contract fees for Long Lake in twenty-four and also twenty-five, because we still have the contract for them to service the northern portion for those two years. The pros to this, we have a gradual transition to be able to do this. This allows the system and details to be worked out over time, allows the firefighters to serve on both departments if they so choose, and local oversight begins sooner than twenty-twenty-six. Cons to this one, we have increased costs to get much sooner, and we have potential for disputes between the city of Long Lake and the city of Orno. This is kind of a busy slide, but one of the things that we'd have to do is the, the blue diamond in the upper left there, we'd have to notify Long Lake if we're going to be moving Station Two call area early. The highlighted yellow pieces, that's the equipment, and we've got to start moving on that as quick as possible because of lead times. And then the green diamond is talking to the state fire marshal's process about establishing a fire department. We've engaged with the state fire marshal's office, we're not able to get a fire department ID until we actually have something in concrete writing that this is where we're started, we can show on the fire station and the apparatus and those types of things to have, a fire department ID. What's nice, what's big about a fire department ID is that you utilize that to submit your national reports back to the NFA. And also, we can't use, we can't apply for any federal grants for any type of apparatus or personnel or anything like that until we have a fire department ID. So those are the big highlights of this particular slide. For four B, this stands, the department up on January first of twenty-twenty-six at the end of the contract, with basically nothing exists after that. We would start establishing that fire department at twenty-five, so be able to stand up on January first. Pros to this one, some costs are deferred to later years, we don't have to start as early as twenty-four. This provides that clean break in responsibility at the end of the contract. We have fewer opportunities for conflict with Long Lake if we so choose this course of action. Cons, limited time to test the procedures processed prior to the assumption of the entire city, and we have a shortened transition time. On this particular one, some of those can move down, except for the equipment side of it, right? So we need to start preparing those specs, which we've already started to do, and prepare those vehicles. We move out the state fire marshal process until twenty-five to establish that fire department ID number. All right. Questions from council?
I have a lot of questions, I have many, many questions, but it's going to come back because of the end.
Well, we're not going to have a session, that's going to be in Jan-, June 12th.
So no questions at this point from council about this?
Not right now, this is.
Okay, so I have. So I want to understand more about Station One, and what you're understanding, what happened to that station in the event that the contract comes to an end with no resolution?
Well, currently, there is no resolution to that whatsoever in the, in any of the contracts. So I don't have any idea of how that's going to transpire, that's why we're asking the negotiating team to work with Long Lake on that disposition of Station One. We, we'd love to see a hundred percent ownership by the city of Orno. It seems to be a non-starter for Long Lake, which I get, so we would, hopefully, we could work out a shared use agreement for that particular facility.
Okay, so it's a, it's an unknown right now?
That is completely obvious.
The contract is silent on Station One?
Correct.
Okay. It looks like in course of action two and course of action four, you use different modeling to determine costs, I wonder if you could talk about that?
So Matt, what do you mean, different modeling?
Modeling in terms of how you're estimating things, you have like, it's either add-to-law or tax capacity, you could go back to course of action two and number four.
So this is course of action two.
Yep.
This was the conceptual fire district that was presented at the fire service meeting in January. Presented at that meeting, there were eleven cities, presented for that conceptual fire district and four fire departments.
And what was that one assuming in terms of how cost was determined?
On that particular one, we assumed for our needs assessment, add-to-law or tax distribution, which is a costing based on market value.
And that's a hundred percent add-to-law in that one?
Correct.
Okay, and what about COA four?
COA four, and three and four, when we're with and without partners, as we talked about in our recommendations, we would ask that we, when we extend contracts for services out to our partners, we don't use the add-to-law, we actually use the League of Minnesota Cities formula, which is a third land value, it's the adopt, the third land value, third population. I don't know, if you see it, let me see if I get the laser pointer over there. That particular one right there, Councilor Agnes, is what we would ask that, that they use for contract terms.
That would be our contract terms for.
For the other cities.
For bringing partners.
But you didn't use that in course of action two, that one-third, one-third, one-third?
No, correct, because most, most taxable fire districts do not utilize that formula.
They do not?
No, they utilize a straight market value. Social fire district does that, local fire district does that, I believe I Santee does. Not sure about Sentinel Lakes anymore after Long, after Long Lakes had left, so.
Okay, and what do you think, what would the cost of call, per call be under course of action four?
I have no idea, we'd have to calculate that, take it back to, cost per call?
Cost per call, do you know what it is in neighboring cities, or what it is in Long Lake right now?
No, I do not, I did not have calculated that at all, and I need my calculations.
What's the, what's the, that would be dependent on who responds at any point.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so your question is exactly what?
We get, let's say, let's say Orno Fire Department gets three hundred calls a year, what is the cost of each of those calls?
By type or hours?
By call. However, Long Lake does it right now, look, I could ask you, in Long Lake, how did you determine the cost of call?
We did determine the cost of call. The formula was based off of call hours, and, and that was a thirty percent rate and then market value, which was a seventy percent rate.
So you have no way of estimating what a call might be?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that I don't have it here and I, I can't do it right now, so I'd be more than happy to do it for you, I just don't have that ability to do it right now.
What's the value of that?
Understanding what you're paying for.
No, because all calls don't take, laugh English, listen, but the, the calls, you know, call hours, understanding your cost per call hour, because not all calls have the same cost, because it goes by the hours, so.
Is that why the Orno pays more?
And so, the, that isn't a good, I mean, the basis, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the value of per call, you all can go with buy the calls and what it is if you buy it at that.
I, I can, I can try and figure this out here in the next couple of days for you, but I mean, we pay eighty-five percent of the bills, we only use seventy-five percent of the calls. That, or seventy-two percent of the calls, that means that the other two cities, you know, I mean, they utilize twenty-eight percent of the service and only pay fifteen percent of the service. So our cost per call is going to be higher than their cost per call, I mean, it's just, my assumption is looking at these numbers right now, so I don't know the exact cost, but what are we comparing that to in?
Other cities, like for example, West Suburban Fire that's newly formed in the Hamala Rado area, were you able to talk to Chief Moore?
I reached out to him, and I did not receive anything back, at least on, on feedback in this particular thing, but I can ask him what his cost per call is for the, that West Suburban Fire District.
Yeah, I believe he may know that, so that may be a helpful piece of information he got. Let's see what else. So I'm interested in a little bit in the Excelsior Fire District model, and it relates to this presentation in terms of, it is more of a shared service JPA, that, the future fire service meetings that you were a part of with Long Lake addressed, and I'd like to hear your thought on this, just because it's relevant to what you've just presented in terms of cost of action, or course of action four. Excelsior serves five cities, smallest is Greenwood, it's seven-hundred, Shorewood is about seven-thousand, and the formula, they determined a formula for how folks contribute to that in five cities, and I have the meeting notes from future fire service here from September fourteenth.
Councilor Agnes, I believe their fire district is based off of add-to-law, it's market value completely, and that started probably five, six years ago.
Okay.
It used to be a formula, and then they phased that formula out to add-to-law, so it's straight market value.
Straight, straight market value, and that's a good point to make, actually, because at that meeting, when the Excelsior, I believe it was chief, presented, they said, for one city, and again, these are five cities ranging in size, Shorewood's closest to ours of population, the quote was, for one city to go it alone would have been more expensive than being part of a JPA, even if it pays more in expense than it has in usage. So I'll read it one more time. Yeah, the question is, again, with involvement in those meetings for two years, and I wasn't at that meeting, but I see that you were, I, it's, to hear a quote like that and then to not address or to really give a little bit more weight to a shared model in the presentation, I'm just wondering, you know, how, how you made me thought of that quote, or was it top of my?
That's the first time I've actually heard that quote. That was a couple of years ago, I, I don't remember the quote, I'm sorry.
I think it's been pretty clear when you see the cost for the first JPA based on taxable value, that's the details we have. A quote of an opinion from some fire chief over in Excelsior is a quote from a fire chief somewhere in Excelsior. We have the details and the numbers, that's what matters.
Sure, and also matters what other cities are doing. So, let me move on. So I guess, on that note, what is your understanding about trends towards JPAs being in these meetings for the last two years?
You know, the, the fire service has trended towards JPAs for smaller departments, kind of merging two departments into one. The talk has been out there for a long time. I mean, I can tell you that Hamala Rado, they started talking about this not eighteen months ago. They started talking about this in two thousand and ten, that was the first study done of this. The mound, St. Bonnie Faces in Minatrista, that, that didn't start recently either, that started back in two thousand and ten also. So those conversations have been ongoing with those cities for fifteen years. So, it's out there, it works for some models and it doesn't work for others, and the, the main people that it really doesn't work for is people with high market values, and you end up supplementing fire service for your surrounding communities. And if that's what the council is agreeable to, I, I guess that's what the council is agreeable to, but I wouldn't want my tax dollars going to supplement somebody else.
That's funny.
Ask Chief Mark Hammond, please.
So, I have another question, in the evaluation, you mentioned that Orno's building a model, or we're building a fire department to be a model for other cities, and again, I respectfully ask the question, how that is so, given that at least the communities and fire departments that I have talked to are not going in the direction of forming independent departments?
So the model that I was talking about is response improvement for our citizens and the health and wellness of our firefighters, that's the model that I was talking about, the departments that we're building.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with having our own stations and our employees or anything, that's simply the health and wellness?
When I was talking about building a model fire department, I was talking about taking care of our personnel and taking care of our citizens first and foremost in the minds of media that's in the council, so. That, that's what I mean by a model fire department, at least in that regard. Maybe it's a bad word to use, because we use model for a couple of different things.
Well, my, yeah, my assumption was you meant the model being the whole, the whole package, no, that's fine. Have you ever imagined doing an independent or considered doing an independent study on the viability of Orno Fire Department? There is some concern that having the chief of this department actually conducting the study, maybe a bit of.
Me personally, no, I, I've not considered that. I know it was considered by the Orno council, it was considered by the Orno council last year, and they chose to move down this path.
You know, look at our expert, Chief Ben Allen's been an expert for how many decades?
Ninety-six.
Our police chief has been a police chief for many decades, and when we ask him how we should do our police service, we, we rely on his expertise, we rely on James' expertise as well. We expect him to be forthright with all the details, there's no details that are hidden, and this is a great time to look at how did we, how did we get here, right? Eight, eight years ago, when we were first elected to council, we told everybody, we were going to assess how Orno was doing business. Why? Because they were planning to get lots of roads done, but they had no money on the roads. They were planning to do works in the parks, and they had no money for parks. And part of our council, when we got elected, we said, you were going to budget correctly. So for eight years, methodically, we have incrementally brought money into the roads where we had none, and we have a million dollars now. The parks had none, we're like two-hundred thousand, one of this next is sustainable for our parks, because nothing was getting done in our parks before. So I don't think people remember that, that kind of stuff going on too. Our water and our infrastructure, they were going to run out of money and start fixing all the thirty-five miles of water and sewer that are underneath our roads, and we not make sure that that's on our budget, so that is actually self-sustaining. We did that where the public works, we know where they were going. You know, when I'm getting to the fire department, there's this part and parcel of how we acted, thank you though, for bringing that up. This, this is about the fire department, because.
No, it's not.
Look, if you want, if you want to interrupt me, because I'll start all over.
Oh boy, please, please, I'm sorry, don't punish anybody with that. Please, please, I'm sorry.
So be respectful of the speakers that are up here, okay? There's people that I think have agreements on all sides, there shouldn't be any booing, heckling, yelling, otherwise we could just end the conversation, because we don't have to do it if we can't be respectful, okay? But how did we get here? Public work, same kind of thing, we got a building that's surrounded by swamps, our population has grown, the houses have grown, we have more roads, and so incremental, we've been budgeting everything for all of these services that we provide. We've been doing it for the police department, so everything is fully funded. The auditors are amazed at how we've done it, but it's been incremental with the staff over time, between our, our, the, our taxable base growing, extra new houses getting developed, paying off debt for seven years that we've been able to reallocate those dollars to put them in the budget where it should be, and we're doing the same thing for fire, for all of the equipment needs, for all of the needs that we need to have. We said from day one, we wouldn't be increasing our tax rate, and we've done it all to this day, and we're going to do it moving forward also with the fire department, all without raising the tax rate. So with the fire department, some of the bigger questions that Matt had brought up that are also from James, is are we satisfied with sixteen-minute response time? Well, I did tell you from my perspective, if I've got my mom or my brother laying on the flopping in the dining room, I don't want some, I don't want to wait twenty minutes, I want, I want a six-minute response time, because sixteen minutes is not good enough.
I lived down the street from you.
Didn't I just ask?
Please don't interrupt.
If we cancel this, it's going to be because of stuff like that going on, okay? So I think it's not good enough, and we can do better, and we can do better in our budget and everything else. And our goal and our job up here is to make things, make sure we do everything for the citizens correctly and in first order, and to be taken care of, because we have a great community here, we have smart people, we have great families, we have people who moved back here for generations, we have great schools, but our population has gotten older, and it's getting older, that means we have more and more medical calls all the time, and that's important to make sure we take care of that, things change in twenty years, and so that's what we are doing, is reassessing what is best for the Orno citizens, as you're up there, for instance, I say, we want to make sure, make sure we take care of our citizens first and foremost, and I will tell you that predictor of future. And I will tell you that predictor of future behavior comes from past behavior. And our past behavior has put everything in place exactly right for the Orno citizens, fully funded everything, and that's not going to change. So with that, okay, well, I'm going to ignore the public now. But I've got a statement I'm going to read before. She can answer questions, but I know you guys have been here and you want to get up here.
No, we want her to ask. Let her ask.
I do applaud the Long Lake Fire Department and all the firefighters, they're fabulous, they work hard, and they do a fabulous job. All the hard work and the training and services it puts, their service is selfless, and what their family is going to support us is not seen and unappreciated. Firefighters, law enforcement, public works are the backbone of our community and am fully supportive of all of you. I also wanted to acknowledge that it's unfortunate that the situation with Long Lake has not been resolved and has been contentious at times, and that the firefighters have been caught in the middle. Our goal here is to ensure we have a place to land for all the firefighters that are supportive of all the hard work we do. Our team will continue to work with Long Lake, however it takes down the road, to see if there's any solutions to work in some arrangement of them as we continue to go down this process. So before you come up and speak, and I do have your cards, and I'll start calling out Orno residents until we exhaust Orno residents first. There's not going to be any votes tonight up here, we're not going to have any council discussions tonight or decisions. That will happen at our following meeting on June twelfth. Our goal tonight is to hear from the chief, which we have, he's laid out the scenarios, and learn what staff believes are the best possible models for Orno future fire services. We've got three weeks between this meeting and the next, where you can reach out to the council, me, the staff, if you don't get those questions answered tonight. We're looking forward to hearing your comments on the models, the rural versus suburban, how important is the response time versus the extra three dollars? And it will all be in our budget. And also the additional cost time for duty crews to supplement our amazing volunteer firefighters. And keep in mind, it's not to replace them, but it's to improve call times during the day when every minute counts, especially when medicals are such a large percentage of our calls with our raging population. And we're also asking that we allow people to speak and not talk over each other. We've set aside an hour, and we have people who have different views and opinions in here, so be respectful of the speakers, the council, and the staff. I would ask for no clapping, booing, heckling, yelling, interrupting. So let people speak, we can have some discussion, but be mindful of the time you're taking so the next person can come on. And if we do, if it gets a little crazy, and people keep getting out of control, we will take a break if we need to. And if we need to keep doing it, we will just end it and bring it back up here to the council and move on to our next item. So we'd like to hear from as many people as we can. So I'll start with my list that I got up here, and I don't know if there's more. Elder Jones, from one eighty-five South Brown Road, are you here?
Jim Elder.
Jim Elder, you want to come up and talk? You came up to public comments, I don't know if you have more to talk about now.
Well, I really don't, I did fill out this sheet, and I wanted to ask why you haven't agreed to do mediation. I mean, this has gone on for three years, you don't seem to be able to reach an agreement. I don't know whose fault it is, it's probably both cities. But, you know, mediation would be a great way to solve this problem, and I really strongly recommend that you do agree to.
Well, I appreciate your opinion on that. You first have to come to the agreement of what you want to mediate first. There's a lot of different issues there.
You've got issues up here that show the positions of the two parties. A mediator says, "What do you need, what do you demand?", and they come up with a recommendation.
Well, I think the mediation, the only mediation you could probably have right now is probably one with disposition of station one, because as you can tell, we've already started our fire department, we've hired a chief, and boss started now. Not to remind you, not to remind you, no matter what direction we go, in terms of what we had to do, we have to have a fire chief, we have to have an Orno Fire Department, right? And we have to have.
Why should we not be the chief? Why should we not be the fire department? What we need is to settle this silly dispute that's taken too long and caused an awful lot of anxiety and costs. And get a mediator in here and help you to city settle.
I appreciate that, but again, I'll also say that, really, the only thing in dispute is truly the value of station one and a thing like one's a seven. And at this point, Long Lake is not, and we do not. And what a mediator can do with that, I'm not sure, but that's probably about the only piece right now. Everything else is, the contract's coming to an end, the equipment's called out in the contract that is spelled out very clearly, so the only thing that is not is the station.
It's very clear, if I may interrupt again, it's very clear that you do not want to have a mediator. And I think you do, that's because of the rigidity you happen to have.
I appreciate your opinion on that. Okay, if you guys are going to do that kind of stuff, we're just going to end it, bring it up, and we're going to be done. If you want to continue that, because there are other people in here too that believe we should absolutely do exactly what we're doing. We got a hundred county pants out there, sixty of them said that's what we should be doing. So if the boers want to be the loudest and think that that's going to make things be better, it's not. So let's just try and let everybody have a say, let's have the conversation.
And you know, but what I will say is, I think this was a missing piece from our negotiation about what we want to do, you know, what is our vision for our fire department, and is that aligned with a Long Lake's vision? I mean, this is an important piece, this was our needs assessment. I've been working intimately on this, and I will say, you know, anyone that's questioning James that the numbers aren't right or something, I think that's really offensive, because I think you've got somebody that he's trying to put this together in a way that is the truth. And that's, he's trying to put together a department that supports his firefighters in a way that could be improved through us. So, I'm open to a lot of remedies, but this is, this is a piece that we didn't have. Victoria and I, what does our department look like? Long Lake might decide, oh, they don't want duty crews, they're comfortable with our rural response time, and we're not. Maybe we're not the right partners, but this is the next piece. I fully anticipate our conversations with Long Lake to continue. But I needed this piece to continue with our negotiations, you know, going forward with it. So we're not shutting the door, this is a needs assessment, this is us learning too, so.
And here's the thing, if everybody's respectful in the audience, if more people get a chance to be heard, and that's important tonight, because people are taking out time for your evening, I'm sure there's a better place you'd rather be than Orno City Hall. But for people to be respectful, at least we can hear your opinions, and that's important.
Is there an Ann and Brian here? I think you both filled one separately, so I don't know if you want to come up together. Over ninety-nine-seven, Wilder's track, right? Is that right?
So the one slide that said the negotiation from January twenty-seventh, that's four months ago. Why hasn't there been anything since then? And this negotiation, can't you go back with something a little less expensive than that? That's one. Two. I think we need our own, I can just figure it out with Long Lake. We're all adults here, we can get along and figure it out. And for council member Seals to be on the negotiating team, that's a conflict of interest if your husband is a firefighter.
Sorry, Ken.
Yeah, we've addressed that. The city has a right to, one of the core functions of a city is to put together the fire, all the parts, things of that nature. At this point, in terms of forming a fire department, I do not believe that council members has a conflict. We have talked about there are certain actions that may lead to conflict, or things that would enrich her household, such as determining salaries. I think that the formation of a fire department is not a result of that conflict, to my understanding.
Does that one comment that you said, Carter, he just wants to say, pay it, agree to it, let's move on, that totally benefits you and your family?
Well, hopefully it benefits all the firefighters, right? And that's, that's, and all of you in here who obviously want to speak and want us to join together, right? Everybody staying together for the benefit.
I did add one point to that, though, the comment that I took that just pay it was the demand from the city of Long Lake, the fire department, it's not, those individual firefighters are not paid from those proceeds.
Right. That would be enriching the city of Long Lake, not the firefighters specifically.
And then one last thing, council member Benson has a lot more questions than you just shut it down. Don't group it up, you know? If that's kind or playing fair, that's it.
Yeah, what was your first question? I forgot, what was your first?
Well, I have to sort of, about January twenty-seventh.
Oh, you know, so just answer that one, I mean, this is, I think everyone with the exception of Melissa, because she wasn't on the council, has taken a vacation negotiating with Long Lake. So this is not, when, this has been a ongoing negotiation since January. What was decided prior, once we received that offer in January, is that we needed a needs assessment. And you can see by the detailed level of effort that's gone into this, this has taken us this time to assemble this information. So what we had been very clear with Long Lake about since their offer was that we were going to get our needs assessment done, which we're doing, we actually had a schedule of what we scheduled, and that then we'd be in a better position to negotiate.
Or just have conversations in general, because I've never shut that door, to your point. I do as often as shut, as won't be shut. But at least we have all the details on it, and we'll talk more about stuff.
The negotiations have been going on over the year.
Three, three plus years.
Three altogether, somebody had on last week, so it's.
I'm sorry, this is just a formal offer, the negotiating thing is to make contact for.
Yeah, the formal offers is what we present, and we weren't holding on, but there were some conversations about other things that could be done in a better way, because I think what you were hearing from Victoria is just, this is fatiguing, you know? I mean, this is not our full-time jobs, and we've been all putting a lot of time and effort into this process, and it's really fatiguing, and it's been a difficult one. And you make it sound so simple, that you could just show up and have a solution, and so clear. But that is what someone would say that wasn't, doesn't have our experience in it. That wasn't meant to be kind of saying, it's just that. There's, there's.
So let me, let me take it back.
Let me just, okay, what do I say? You go home at night and your arm hurts from patting yourself on your back because you're always doing the perfect, exceptional job?
No, ma'am, but I tell you one thing, we're up here doing the best we can, and for people in a certain community, such as myself, such as Victoria's husband, to be assaulted for that, it is not good. So, your council does the best it can. We work for the citizens of Orno, that is our main focus. It's not supplementing the people from the city of Long Lake. It's not. It's serving the citizens of Orno. They have our biggest concern, our biggest interest, and our biggest focus.
And we have done great things for the city, so yes, Hannah's not getting tired yet. So, so Hannah and I showed up at first, held a meeting, I think, seven months ago, with an issue that we wanted to appear and be heard about, and we've been back since, I think, every meeting other than, I think we missed three. So seven months, and we're missed three meetings. So we've heard conversation on the fire department. I've actually had a chance to talk to council member Johnson several times and learned a little bit more on the phone about the fire department that I hadn't heard in the council, and I should talk to you, Mr. Mayor, at one point. The piece, the starting question is always why, right? Why, why are we going down the road of our fire department, or taking it away from, if you want, taking it away from Long Lake? The misleading piece that I saw today, or at least for me, and I don't want to make any accusation to anybody, I stand here actually not knowing, is it better for the bigger of the entities to control the fire department or not? And there's an argument, both ways, and I agree with you. The misleading piece is, the offer that came from Long Lake, at least the way I understood it, through the meetings that I came to and the things I heard along the way, is after the fire chief was hired away. It was after the fire truck was purchased. It was after there was a vote taken to improve the fire truck that was purchased. It was after this council, against opposition, voted to go to the state, or county, or whoever it is, to change the firefighters' pension fund from Long Lake to Orno. This is all happening before this, so there's no, there's no public input. And there's, and there's really, I've been to all the meetings, I really believe not good answers from the council as to why. It's one simple question is why. Now, the point that did come up is the response out of fire station two, I think we saw, right? So, isn't there a way to work with Long Lake and improve upon that? Wasn't there other things that could have been done instead of taking over the fire department? My take on this, my personal take, and I've been to almost all the meetings, the pieces I heard, is, and the word bully has been used in this chamber a lot today, but we are bullying Long Lake, and it feels like the negotiations were also in a way of bullying. And when people stood up, no different than Ann now, to respond and say, something doesn't sound right, or that isn't what I understood, it really just gets put, pat on the head and goes sit down. So it's, I don't know if going down the road of the fire department for Orno is exactly the right thing or not, I just don't, there's, you know a lot more, you're into the details. But it's really not taking public input. I believe that's probably the number one thing. John, with your elevator?
Number twenty-five Oxford Road?
That's correct. First one to start off by saying, I have utmost respect for the police department, for the fire department, for the firefighters on both cities, both towns. When I look at this slide here, if I was teaching first year business school class and somebody agreed to this agreement, I would fail that. If I was in a public company negotiating with somebody, and somebody that works for me signed that agreement, they'd be fired. This seems ridiculous to me. I mean, it feels like, yes, it's not ideal to go it alone. We're paying eighty-five percent of the cost anyways, we can go it alone. They're paying ten percent of the cost? They're going to wilt on the vine, and they should become crawling to us to say, yes, give us some service agreement, they should pay us four million bucks to do this, how about we make that as a counteroffer? So, I appreciate that you care about Orno residents and Orno taxpayers first, and not giving our money away as a gift to somebody who's trying to hold us hostage, this huge amount of money for something we've been paying for all along, I guess it seems ridiculous to me. And when I hear, and I'm making decisions, just sitting in this meeting alone, listening to this stuff, and it's like, there are murmurs in the crowd, and it's like, what, do you keep on understanding? I don't mean to condescend either, but this seems pretty simple to me. And when I hear in our community, I think I represent the silent super majority, there's eighty-two hundred people in Orno, and there's fifty or a hundred people in this room. It means there's eighty-one hundred people that just want the fire department to show up at their house if there's a catastrophe. They just want the police to be there to help them. And if the neighbor in town, who's only putting ten percent of this towards us, is trying to hold us hostage, I care about the long term, the next ten years, the next twenty years, and not about what's happening at this moment in time, where they're trying to literally hold us hostage, when we can go it alone if we have to. It's not ideal. If I had to guess, if you want me to mediate this thing, we go it alone, they come crawling to us and ask us for a service agreement later anyways, and we'll support them, because it's the right thing to do. But we shouldn't give that up to them, just because they're running around with their hair on fire. I mean, they were here today, outside, passing out flyers to the people coming to this room. So, if honestly, if you're negotiating with somebody, and they're here at our meeting in Orno, the Long Lake people are here to try to get their points across and their negotiating thing, and that just, the gun is next to me, says, "I disagree with them." No matter how like they think they are, it doesn't matter. Same thing with the people in the room that are completely disrespectful to you guys up here and the way that they talk and scream and, I don't know, all of it. This is the first time I've ever stood up and spoken, this is the council, first time ever. I showed up here, I've seen some of these online, and it's appalling. And the eighty-one hundred people that aren't here, that in this town are respectful, normal people that just want to go about their lives and have this thing happening.
that just want to go out their lives and have this thing happen, and I kind of feel like the tiny majority that are super, super loud, that literally scream at you guys on every single topic that there is in this town, it's kind of like tiny little Long Lake trying to hold us up for four million dollars for something so we can donate a part of the building and then pay them back, or it, it seems ridiculous to me. So I don't know, I guess I'm here trying to support the rational, super majority in this town that just wants services to, to, to work. And, and the negotiations, they're clearly the smaller minority player, I need to hit every kind of negotiations in the business world. Of course, the tiny little small player is going to ask for the stars and the moon, but that doesn't mean you roll over and just give it to them. And if that means we go it alone, it costs a little bit more money in the, in the, the next couple of years, we'll have a lot better service, and over the next twenty or thirty years, I think we'll be better off. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Strangenberg, thirty-eight, ninety-five Bayside Road.
What? That's it. I don't know COAs, I don't know a lot of acronyms. I do know that seemed to jump into these four courses of access, and the big one, sitting out there, why do we have to do this? Likely to just take with Long Lake and renegotiate it. What I do know, and what you folks who are elected, and you folks who are on salary know, is that a city attorney does everything from misdemeanors to contracts. And one thing a city attorney should not do is litigate, especially in a dispute of this magnitude. I can't tell you where the court of original jurisdiction is, but I'll bet you it's not district court in a county. I can't tell you that many lawyers are very proficient at what they do. Trial lawyers are different. There are trial lawyers who will eat their young alive. And if you look at a team from Gray Plant, one of the other firms downtown, you better be careful in a deposition, because they will have read everything that is uttered tonight from all of you. I hate to say it, Luke prevail, and I apologize, but it's canon. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. What almost do you go? Steve Persson, Hunt Rowan?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for calling my name. First of all, thanks for all the time that you've put in for this end of the fire department, one thousand five hundred armor, by the way. Thank you for asking tough questions. Thank you for being a firefighter's wife. I was a former fire chief at Long Lake. And a couple of the questions that I had as the needs assessment was presented, what station wants response time?
Uh, daytime response?
Fourteen minutes.
It was just under fourteen minutes for daytime response.
In two thousand, it was under five minutes. I was on wrong road. Um, does your response time include police response and ambulance?
No, it's, it's just our response.
Just fire department's response, okay. Um, is North still Long Lake Fire?
Uh, they still write in Long Lake Fire Department.
So they're instantly north of five minutes medical city, essentially, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there's a two-stage dispatching.
Please, please start it.
There's a two-stage dispatching, so head of accounting goes first, and when they pass by, it's a...
Yeah, good evening, Hannah. When I listened today, what I heard was, it's important to improve the response time that we have. And a method to do that, that's being pictured tonight, is duty crews. I don't think you need to build a brand new fire department to implement duty crews. I did have a question about other, um, offers that the city of Long Lake has made. My, my understanding in attending a Long Lake meeting was that they've come up with a number of alternatives than the one that was just presented there. So I'm wondering if those are still part of ongoing negotiations. You need to answer that.
You sense that? You sense that offer?
Yeah, well, I saw one the other night, and it had a very different amount of percentages associated with the cost associated with the city of Orno.
Nothing has been passed by their council on that, that you've seen. That's the only one that their council has been three and a half years.
Okay. Back when I was chief, we had a group of people that, um, worked together through issues. We pulled the fire station at the time. Part of that process was, um, acrimonious, but as the process unfolded, we ended up with something that we're very proud of. Um, I'm not sure if it's continued to be invested in and maintained in a way that it should be, or if the equipment needs or the facility itself has continued to be invested in to meet the needs of responses and service to our community. That's something that I think other people could answer, but all as a part of that discussion, that was a key component of that, that we just didn't want to let it fail. We wanted to continue to maintain pride in the department and in the people. So it served, um, it served the citizens in Orno and Long Lake and other strongly communities that we serve. I guess I, in, in closing, I would ask you to continue to have discussions. There's a lot of spirit around joining forces to improve services for the citizens in communities around, well, I'd say the country. We know they're taking place in and around here. Twenty years ago, we were, Dave and I were talking about, should we be partnering with Maple Plain and Wayzetta and have a town department? It didn't make sense to us that Wayzetta would have a stroke or a drug, and we went out and mopped them. Didn't make sense to us. It made sense for us to collaborate and work together as communities of fire departments to do that. I think you're in a position to, to take Orno to that level. One of the things that my senses that all of you talked about when you ran for the positions that you're in right now is servant leadership. And there's times where it doesn't seem like that's taking place. Thank you.
Three twenty-three Planes, Long Lake?
I'm flattered that you'd have that memorized.
I took Long Lake, I, oh.
I appreciate you shooting me in here. Full disclosure, I did not fill out a carbon sign to be up here, so thank you for calling me up. I wanted to add some context, I should say, first and foremost. I am a firefighter, sixteen-year member of the Long Lake Fire Department, and a member of the Relief Association as well. I stand up here before you today, not as a representative of either of those organizations, but as a citizen of Long Lake who happens to serve in that capacity as well. Uh, I just wanted to provide some more context to a comment, a couple of comments that I heard. Uh, one, you were comparing, yes, our Achilles' heel of response time, station two during the day. We know that and have known for a long time that that is our, that is our weakness, responding to aid on call fire department. Um, but then you compared that response time to somebody flopping on the kitchen floor. And you need to take into consideration that when you talk about an average response time, everybody knows that the vast majority of the calls that fire department responds to are non-life-threatening emergencies. Things that we drive routine to, no lights, no sirens, right? Things like wires down, smell of natural gas, lift assist. These are things that we're not going to speed to. We're going to get there diligently and quickly, but we're going to do it safely and at an appropriate speed compared to a heart attack. Um, and to put this, kind of wrap this all up, a week ago Friday, we responded to a cardiac arrest. Um, and it was in the middle of the day on a Friday, our Achilles' heel, right? Um, we got there from station one, granted, prior to any squads arriving on scene. OPD OS does a fantastic job of arriving there, like Mr. Persson said, we work in conjunction, right? They typically respond first because they're already out on the roads, they're ready, they're there. On Friday, the Long Lake Fire Department beat them there, and we were going to work before they walked in the door, right? Because that was a true emergency. Someone was on the floor and needed our help now, and we were there right after. So you have to look at all of the facts, all the information, before you try to compare apples to oranges. Um, one other thing I wanted to put a little context to was tax dollars. You both mentioned tax dollars. Wanted to say, in Long Lake, sorry, stay in Orno and support the Orno Fire Department. Well, I'll point out that you don't stay in Orno, right? Do all of your emergencies happen in Orno? They don't. We're in and out of each other's communities all the time. Long Lake residents are in and around Orno, Orno residents are in and around Long Lake, we have plenty in Lydina, Wayzetta, all of these areas. We should collectively want all of these fire departments to be as good as they possibly can be. Even if that means we have to give a little extra of ourselves, like a firefighter might do. Might give a little extra of themselves to make sure that everyone is supported and safe. And that's the idea that you should move forward with as you continue to try to figure out a long-term agreement with Long Lake and maybe some other communities and fire departments as well. I appreciate the time.
Heather Gray, Angel, Angel Lane?
Thank you for calling me up. Um, I am a fire wife, and I have been for another part of a decade here, and I have spoken, been to all of the meetings, and I have spoken to an embarrassing number of council members for many, many hours, citizens for many, many hours, firefighters for many, many hours, and have gathered a lot of, what I've gathered is that it seems to be, another person brought it up, a fundamental lack of understanding about why we are here. Even people in the room, I did not hear here tonight, have had a hard time putting their finger on any specific issue that would lead to some of the drastic changes that are being proposed. What I have heard repeatedly from citizens outside of these chambers and inside these chambers tonight is that the ongoing dispute is largely due to concerns about, uh, control and not what actually is about, uh, improving public safety. Additionally, that the responsibility of the situation that we are in currently, the small negotiations, and the need for updated equipment and upgraded facilities is shared between the two cities, including Orno, and with all due respect with Chief Van Isle, who was the, who was our much well-respected chief prior to being serving here in Orno. I have been hopeful for a solution that moves us towards strengthening the high-functioning and well-respected public safety asset that has proudly served this community for a hundred years and away from burning down an institution, that this, uh, and this department, and starting from scratch. This is the best option for the community. And there's a couple of things that I heard tonight, comments that I'd like to, like to touch point on. One of the citizens came up here and talked about Orno giving it away to the city of Long Lake. And I really take umbrage with that, because if you are a citizen who has called nine-one-one and, and fire service has showed up in your home, I don't think that you felt that you were giving your tax dollars away to the city of Long Lake. Further, James made a point where he says that Long Lake has proposed that they, quote, "only want to pay seventy thousand dollars a year for ten years." It is my understanding that the last negotiated document that went back to the city of Long Lake, um, I'm so sorry, that, that went back to the city of Long Lake from Orno included that exact dollar amount, and that the majority of the problems that are coming from this are, are, are problems that are related to being able to figure out who owns station one and what that's going to do. It is my personal opinion as a firefighter, this is my, firefighter's, this is my family. These are people that I rely on every day because they are part of my life. And James was part of my life and part of my family, still is part of my family. But I have to say that unfortunately, because of his position on either city, whether he was the Long Lake chief or the Orno chief, although his years of experience are very much well-known and appreciated and documented here, he is not an unbiased person. An independent audit or mediation is absolutely necessary to get us to come to a place where this council and the city of Long Lake can all come together, because as firefighter Cody Farley pointed out, we are in and out of each other's cities at every moment. And the fact of the matter is that firefighters don't jump out of their beds having heart attacks when their pagers go off in the middle of the night. They have all served respectively for years, and they all stand up, and they put on their boots, and they walk out the door, and they do a good job of it, and they're not having some sort of cardiac arrest or any sort of stress emergency. When they all had that pager just went off back there at the beginning of this meeting, not one, not one hesitated, not one stood up and thought, oh my goodness, what am I going to do? I'm going to jump out of my skin. They got up and they were ready to go, because that's what they do, because they're heroes. And the only thing that they have requested from every council is to stay together so that they can continue to provide the level of service that they have served in this community for over a hundred years. And any agreement that doesn't allow that is despicable.
Kelly Fackler, Gretel? John?
Yep, Kelly Fackler. Um, I just have a few questions that I've done, as we were all looking at the presentation tonight, and then perhaps, if not answered tonight, answered at a future meeting, it might be helpful, because I'm probably not seeing anyone thinking these things. Uh, my first question was, what kind of mediation has gone on in order to further these negotiations? That's been discussed a little bit already. I would say to those who have said, we can't accept what was up there. I don't disagree with you, but that doesn't mean that we can't move forward in negotiations. And that's the purpose of those negotiations. So it would be really helpful, I think, for the citizens to hear how those negotiations have gone and why they have stalled. Um, and, and I, along with others, are suggesting the possibility of some kind of mediation through a third party in order for things moving forward. Um, just a couple of things that I don't want to get buried. Um, one of the first things we talked about was the current fleet is near its end of life, and that creates a massive need for equipment costs. I don't know about you all, but anyone who's, uh, worked in business knows that when you buy capital equipment, you plan for its useful life and you budget for that. So I guess the question that I have is, why are we not budgeting in advance for the replacement of these capital equipment costs? Um, I was, I was wondering about, um, when, when you say, sorry.
I have a good question.
Oh, thank you. Um, I wonder, when you say staff recommends, um, COA four? I, I guess, just for the rest of us who aren't involved in this daily life, who is staff? Because for me, I'm wondering, um, I'm wondering what the firefighters want personally. Um, number, my question number four, when you talk about the possibility of partners and that offsetting some of the costs for some of these options, I'm wondering what the reality is of us realistically being able to partner with other neighboring cities? I've heard some of the discussions that have gone on, and from what I'm hearing, again, unvalidated, we'll love to validate, um, that there's not seeming to be a lot of interest in that. So, um, I, I think it would be helpful for us to understand what kinds of conversations are going on and the likelihood that other neighboring cities will want to partner in some of these costs. Um, number five, a lot of discussion around the response times. I appreciated very much the context of the fact that some of those response times are not true emergencies, and so, um, that context is helpful, I think. But I also am wondering, um, how we can count on improved response times with the new model when over half of the firefighters potentially will be left behind? And so to me, as a citizen, I'm concerned about actually having enough volunteers available to respond in a timely manner. And, um, I know the firefighters are most concerned about being able to stay together. And then the last question I have that's not been addressed at all tonight is, um, I understand one of the big issues is the pension, and if this all just keeps chugging forward without an independent audit or further public comment or vote or whatever else, um, and we do move forward with an Orno station on our own, um, I guess my question is, how are we making sure that those firefighters who do transition from Long Lake to Orno are kept whole for the years of service when it comes to their pension? Thank you very much for those questions.
For, uh, Penny here. Writing is very hard to read, but I know what you go.
That's me. Penny, seventy-eight, twenty-eight, seventy-four, Best Oak Point Road. And, um, I think we need to take a whole step back and remember that Orno, all of, many of us moved out here with a character of the city which is less urban and more rural, and that's the way the basis was. rural, and that's the way the basis was. And when we talk about a response time that's very similar to urban Minneapolis, that people that want that should move back to Minneapolis or to St. Louis Park and the other suburbs. The reason you move out here is just because you want to be in nature. So that's one thing. The other thing is-
There is no response time in Minneapolis. It's a lot lower, so it's a bad, it's a bad analogy.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is go to urban, that's the definition of urban in Minneapolis. So go to a more responsive, if that's what you're looking for. When you move down here, you're moving into the country. Okay, that's number one. Number two, the whole thing about the Long Lake station, you've left them in the lurch. So they need, they of course don't have a service. I mean, it's broken up, that, to, to do what you're doing, that's the second thing. The third thing is they're, um, everybody else, Minnetoka Beach, um, Minnitrista and, I mean, Medida and, um, Long Lake are subsidizing Orono. It's like that man said, maybe we pay eighty-five percent, but fifteen percent is being paid by people that have very few calls. So, and if we can share everything, the equipment, the building, I mean, I don't know why we need to have the lease, why do we need to have people sleeping, you know, I mean, the firefighter, the one that can, they probably are more comfortable at home. Okay. All those kinds, all those kinds of things that are, um, we need to remember that it's, I feel like what we have right now, Long Lake and the police, the Long Lake Fire Department and our Orono police, I love, I mean, their service, I rely on them, I don't even worry. And so to break it up and to start from scratch also is a call to the, um, care reinsurance company in the U.S. for homeowners and business liability, all that stuff. I bet it doubles. I bet, well, all our home insurance rates are going to go up because we'll have an unproven service. And you've already given them a three-year notice that we're not going to have service. So just be prepared. I think you could back off and, you know, appreciate what you have. That's it.
Can I bring back up here a council, a council member, Ben, so he had a couple more, a couple more questions?
Um, I have a question about the capital and I know the report said it and I would agree, based on what I've read in history that has been chronically under, the CIP and the capital expenditures have been chronically underfunded. And it does sound like in the minutes I've been reading from the future fire services and whatnot, that, you know, I know other cities have struggled with that. Um, but the question is, what would still be broken or what would still need to fix if we simply infused, um, Long Lake Fire Department with capital? Would that solve some of these problems?
I mean, it would solve the compliance issue with FPA, but it wouldn't solve the funding issues.
So more is needed than dollars here? And working out schedules with either duty crews or crews at different, um, stations?
I guess maybe I have another question.
A commitment by the cities who have partnered historically with Long Lake Fire, Orono being one of them, a commitment to better fund capital, which it looks like we've already been doing in the last year or so, we've increased our capital just very recently. Would a commitment to doing that and getting real about capital funding solve many of these issues?
So that was presented last year and the, we didn't receive support from the cities to fund it.
Was that the, was that the CIP that we got in August, is that correct?
Yeah, the 2023 CIP that was listed there was rejected by two other three cities.
So we're here out of an unwillingness of the partner cities being Orono, Long Lake, Medina to fund capital expenditures? Is that why we're creating this department?
No, that is, that is not the case. We're going to use our contract. The contract is that name. We have decided that everything is better served having us have, in control. Actually, Long Lake has not disputed that notion that they are, without a question saying, "Yes, okay, you can give it control." To do that, we have to do all these processes that we have to go through, whether it's the fire chief, the fire relief association, as well as getting a fire department member, all that stuff has to be done. And then it's just a matter of which model. Does the model say that we want to partner with Long Lake and do service for them? Um, that, that, that still is up to them.
So the decision was on Orono's part to not re-up the contract? It didn't just end?
It, it, no, it's ending.
It's ending and we, as a council, decided not to continue?
Not to continue to negotiate new contract.
Okay. And no mediators were involved in that decision because it sounds like it was a tough one I was not on council then.
No mediators were involved. We, we've made lots of decisions like that at the council, whether it's, uh, Public Works, where Public Works and our police department fleet, where we had, doing tons of outsourcing of all of our equipment and our trucks and our vehicles. And we decided after spending so much money outsourcing all that stuff that we could do in-house a lot better, a lot faster-
Better.
-and have it and better and be able to get to it when we need to get to it. And this is no different when we took over the Moun Police Department. You know, it was unfortunate for Moun that they got rid of the police department, but we took that over and that was like not a problem. I'm sure there's probably hurt feelings at Sellsure and Moun and Maple Plain when they lost the contracts for Orono fourteen years ago and twenty years ago. Um, I know we lost our fire, our, after forty-two years, we lost our police department contract with Long Lake with thirty days' notice and that's all we got. We had to let go of a few people because of that. So there's, things change all the time and that contract was ending, things have changed in Orono and we thought it was a good time to reassess who was in charge of those, of that service. And we thought that we were best, at the time we boarded on that, we thought we were best to provide those services ourselves and to bring that and help us win that contract does add.
Okay. And that was the decision made without community input? Just want to clarify that.
Uh, the community input is called an election. I'm sure you will wear that as well. We've made all the decisions for the last eight years and I can go back on all those decisions where, where the community picked us because they said, "You know what? Having fear in us and sprinkling them on our roads doesn't work very well. Having fear in us and sprinkling them on our parks doesn't work, we actually need money." At the time, I remember having a conversation with the council, a woman who says, "We have a pavement management plan." I was like, "A pavement management?" I thought, "No, money is not a plan. You have to actually budget for it and put money aside." So methodically for the last eight years, we incrementally put stuff in the budget to get everything covered in Orono within the same tax rate by reallocating dollars over time and paying off debt correctly like any good business person would do to put the money where the priority should be. And that's what we have done. Those are the same decisions we've made with the fire departments. Based on being elected, we have made all the decisions for those entire eight years and nothing has changed and nothing is changing because of that either.
So let's get it laid. I'm just going to ask one more question. I'm wondering, um, Chief Van Ille, if you could speak to the joint and cooperative agreement for public safety purchasing? Just talk about what that is and how it may, um, affect Orono Fire Department in the future.
Are, are we talking about the one that we joined, um, just recently?
Yes. What is, what is the joint and cooperative agreement for public safety purchasing?
So that was a cooperative that was put together by Hannibal Chiefs, um, to be able to have light equipment between fire, or fire departments so that we're on a mutual aid scene. Uh, air packs were similar, gear were similar and that everybody understood what the other departments were having on their backs. Um, it's not about purchasing for less price, it never has been. It's about having equipment that's very similar between departments so that when we owe their scene, when they call us for mutual aid, we're familiar with their equipment and when they come to ours, they're familiar with us.
So it's about working essentially as a team or as a collaborative effort with other municipalities?
I would say it's more about having the same equipment. And so when you are called to that, which we're part of the mutual aid agreements and when we do have our fire departments fit up, we'll be able to respond and, and we'll have very light equipment and be able to utilize it well.
Okay, so even in the event of Orono Fire Department, you recognize that we're part of the bigger whole?
I think that's what I just said about the mutual aid equipment, yes.
Very good. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, well, I appreciate everybody for coming. We are done at the council level and we're going to move to our mayor council report since, uh, council member, so just started, over to council member Johnson to start.
Mr. Mayor, can you explain how you're going to go forward between now and the next meeting process, please, so we know without having to repeat?
Uh, the next meeting, we're going to have a discussion up here at the council and make a decision on which, uh, plan to move forward with. Okay, council member Johnson.
Councilman Crosby. I think there's some interesting topics that I, uh, one person brought up, the pension and the relief situation. I would support if there are firefighters that leave Long Lake and come to Orono, that they would be fully vested and it would not cost them dollars in whatever their vested pension was. It's important to keep firefighters home. Those are the people doing the job. And I think we appreciate that and I think we recognize that. Another big point is, it is interesting that there's been a lot of discussion of, "Why would we do this? Why would we not renew the contract?" I'm shocked to see that we didn't have this type of discussion or outrage when Long Lake walked away from Orono PD years ago. That seemed to be a nothing event. This is simply us not renewing the contract. And to not understand that, yes, we do not stick our fingers in the air and ask for opinion or on every single subject because we are elected and, and put in this position to do the job. If we did that, nothing would get accomplished. We would sit in mediocrity the whole time. But to understand and look at the fact that this is a large financial decision, we pay eighty-five percent of the bill. What business can anybody in this crowd recognize that pays eighty-five percent of a bill? The other party pays about seven. They, the seven is the controller, the eighty-five is not. If somebody can name that business, let me know. You can even send me an email on it. But I don't know if there's one that exists out there. This is about being good stewards of your tax dollars, creating a safe, efficient service, improving it, respecting the fire department, respecting our neighbor city of Long Lake because I still have respect for the Long Lake City and, and the officials that run it. Do I hope that we work something out that we can agree upon? I do. I do. I served on the Long Lake Fire Department for ten years. Do I hope we can work something out? Yes. But it would be in the manner of Orono running that department. That's how it would be. Because it's about dollars and cents, ladies and gentlemen. There's not a business out there that the seven percenter is the decision maker. Doesn't happen. And yes, we are stewards of your dollar. We paid off debt, we budgeted properly, we budgeted for roads and infrastructure, all of those things. And we didn't raise our hands and say, "Guys, we're paying off a bunch of bonds, should we do it? Let's get public consensus on that." This is something better for the city. It's going to be more efficient, better run, if the duty crew model is a model that gets implemented, that is not going to have a negative impact on the existing firefighters. It will not impact their call percentage, which is extremely important, but it will provide a proper response time during the day. And as a former firefighter, I can tell you, daytime response is extremely difficult. People have full-time occupations, they have responsibilities, they can't make it. I left work and I said to make calls. People will leave their places of work and employment to make calls. But again, that takes time. So yes, not every emergency is a medical with somebody with a heart attack or full arrest or anything of that nature. But the one thing I will tell you is, most of the time on a medical, they don't know what it can turn into. You know sometimes when you get there and I'm seen. But the public's interest and the citizens of Orono is our interest. And we will do everything we can to make sure that we have the proper fire department in place and we do our due diligence. And I thank the chief for being extremely thorough with his presentation today. And I appreciate everybody who stayed and listened. Thank you.
Councilmember Seals. Councilmember Benson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, before I get to my comments on the fire discussion, I just want to address one issue that is unrelated, um, which is that questions have raised in the past in some of the meetings regarding, um, a current piece of open litigation, um, with Mr. Nygaard against the city of Orono and various specific people within the city. And I'm not a lawyer and I'm not going to play one here. Um, but what I do want to indicate to the people who are interested is that I did contact the league of Minnesotaian Cities Insurance Trust and they have provided me with the letters explaining how this, um, trust covers this litigation. So I just am going to say that, I'm not going to get into it, but for those of you who are interested, um, I will make these available. Um, they're here now for anyone who wants to have, um, take a picture or contact Adam for a copy, um, because that is part of public record. And on that note, I do want to just thank all those who responded to the online comment card who spoke tonight, um, and who attended or watched online. And I'm very glad to know that our closed captioning is coming to the city of Orono because that will definitely make it more accessible, these meetings for certain folks in the community. I want to say that I attended the Long Lake Open House Forum last week. And I want to repeat here what I did say that night, which is that based on my experience, and again, I'm not a fire expert, but I've been on council now for, this is my first term, I've been doing a lot of reading, a lot of talking, a lot of research on this issue of fire service. And, um, my opinion is that, um, you know, as we move forward with these decisions, what I've learned is that fire suppression and the act of putting out fires is about control. I believe the fire service is about community. And on that note, I want to just put for some questions to my fellow council members tonight rather than, um, talking more about some of these issues we've already covered. I'm just going to ask them open-ended questions that I would appreciate my fellow council members considering as we move forward with this issue. How have we kept our residents at rest of our intentions and actions related to major changes in fire service delivery over the last few years? Are we open to using available resources such as informal or contracted mediation in future negotiations with the Long Lake City Council? How did we inform residents about the impact the bonding sale in 2021 had on the increase in their tax levy this year? And how have we informed residents about the impact the creation of an Orono Fire Department will have on their tax levy in the near future? In what ways has this council demonstrated that the city of Orono is a friendly neighbor? Are we aware that other cities around us have been developing partnerships, sharing resources and forming fire districts collaboratively? Should we be concerned that we're moving further, further away from this direction? What guarantees exist that we will help contract cities interested in receiving service from an Orono Fire Department? Are we aware of the perception the city officials, staff and residents and neighboring communities have of the Orono City Council with regard to our planning around fire services? Is control over a fire department worth the price that will be paid by our residents to build, operate and staff a fire department now and into the future? Is paying eighty-four percent of budget when we make up seventy-two percent of the calls going to be more or less of a burden than paying one hundred percent of the budget, perhaps one hundred percent of the time? Is the establishment of an independent fire department for a city that averages about three hundred calls a year a necessity? Would an infusion of capital dollars into the Long Lake Fire Department solve any of the issues we're trying to fix with this new department formation? And finally, is this council open to actively seeking out independent data, engaging experts, listening to our residents and working with other cities to determine the best course of action for our community as a whole? That's all. Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll start with a quote.
Yes. Love the quote.
This one, uh, this one's from Bill Russell, who just recently passed away. One of the greatest basketball players ever, I think he's got what, ten or thirteen championship rings with Boston. rings with Boston. He goes, "The most important measure of how good a game I play was how much better I played my teammates play." So with that, this last couple of weeks, I think our police chief is gone, but we had our deputy chief, Chris Fisher, had his retirement party just the other day up in St. Michael. St. Michael, it's a fitting because St. Michael is the patron saint of law enforcement. I gave my St. Michael coin as well. Keep with him, keep you safe all the time, because that's what the patron saint of law enforcement does, to keep you safe. Also, it's at the Hackett Berry Park meeting where we've had heard from neighbors. That's going to be an exciting project. It's the first time in history we've built that entire park. And we're going to do some amazing things. There's water problems they've had for decades and decades and decades. We're going to probably have to do, spend a lot of money there, but it's going to be a great project. It's going to be one that's going to be a lifetime that you'll see in Orno. Also, as the Northwest State League of Minnesota Cities, Police Chief Rogers was there talking about the same issues with law enforcement recruiting and everything else that's prevalent out there. He goes, because he's so supportive of his council, they do have a much better job at recruiting. Unlike cities like Golden Valley, who's, I think, down to top six policemen now, where they had thirty as they went anti-pleasan number of years ago. I don't know if you just saw in the newspaper too, just St. Louis Park has some big water main break, and they don't have a whole lot of money set aside for that. So they're going to have to raise tax rates a whole bunch just to start thinking about replacing the raging infrastructure. Going back to discussions we've had, all the great things that we've done, we've got all that infrastructure building and we're a bunch already. So we're thinking way ahead for everybody, keeping everybody in line. And we didn't have to go ask anybody to see if it was good. We knew it was good, we got it done correctly, and we've implemented all that stuff over the years. I think everything's been said about the fire thing at this point, so I'm not going to add anything to that right, right now, but I will end with two quotes. They're both from Jim Brown, one of the greatest grunybacks of all time, who also just passed away. First quote is, "You cannot get me to be disloyal to a friend. You just can't do it. Loyalty is part of what I live by. I didn't say I wasn't going to be loyal to my friend because he was right. I'm going to be loyal to my friend because he's my friend." Second quote from Jim Brown is, "I'm not interested in trying to work on people's perceptions. I am who I am, and if you don't take the time to learn about that, then your perception is going to be your problem." So with that, I'm going to close the public meeting, and we're going to go to our closed session. And the meeting will be closed as permitted by the Attorney Client Perpetual Section 13D.05, subdivision 3B, to discuss a travel litigation by the city of Long Lake regarding the cancer-related fire protection. And we'll take a five-minute break for somebody to clear out.
Thank you for coming, folks.
I thought we were friends at one time. Wasn't that your original narrative? That we're friends? You said we were friends, right? That was my great friend. You didn't know the problem with colors were yellow and black, huh? You're a fucking member. Hey, you carried a gun.
I'm getting on the hill.
That's what I thought.
Okay.